All the ordinary regular meeting. Here we are.
You're getting the signal from John to cut again.
Okay, I'm going to call and order the regular meeting of the zoning commission for October 11th, 2011. Commissioner DiCaprio, present. Commissioner Farah is currently absent. Commissioner Haddad.
Here.
Commissioner Who is currently absent. Commissioner Jowdy.
Here.
Commissioner Kovacs.
Sir.
Commissioner Rents is absent. He had a different family, so we didn't want to extend our no-passes to cross that date him and his family loss. Commissioner Tierney is en route. Altering Commissioner Palma. Altering Commissioner Spignolos is home and unable to make it this evening. And altering Commissioner Vannity.
Here.
And I have Commissioner Lo. If we would please stand up to the pledge, may Commissioner Palma, Julius.
I surrender my allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, in the name of our nation, our government, and the citizens who live here.
Okay, our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 25th, 2011. This time we have no minutes to set this evening. So with that, we have our first public hearing, which is scheduled to begin at 7:30. This is a petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis Elbert, planning director, to amend sections 10b2 of the zoning regulations, fees for downtown revitalization zone. Commissioner Kovacs will read the legal notice. Commissioner Haddad will read the planning recommendation, and I will read the staff. Commissioner Kovacs.
Notice hereby given that the zoning commission of the City of Danbury will, public hearings commence at 7:30pm on October 11th, 2011. The council chambers and the third floor city hall, 55 Giral Avenue, consider the following matter. Petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis Elbert, planning director, to amend sections 10b2 of the zoning regulations, fees for downtown revitalization zone. Partisans' interest and citizens should have an opportunity to be heard at this time.
Commissioner Haddad.
I'll letter address the City of Danbury, October 11th, 2011, to Robert C. Malillo, Chairman Danbury's Zoning Commission, from Arnold P. Finelli, Junior Chairman Danbury Planning Commission. In reference to 83A referral petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis Elbert, planning director, to amend section 10b2 of the zoning regulations, downtown revitalization zone fees. At the regular meeting held on October 5th, 2011, the City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a positive recommendation for the following reasons. This was one of the public consensus included in the Major Street Renaissance Task Force report. A reduction in permit fees will let potential developers of the downtown know if the city is willing to work with them. Motion was made by Mr. Manuel, seconded by Mr. Yuris, and passed unanimously.
Okay, the City of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department, dated October 3rd, 2011, to City of Danbury Planning Commission, City of Danbury Zoning Commission, from Dennis Elbert, planning director. Regarding petition of the City of Danbury to amend zoning subdivision regulations pertaining to permit fees for downtown revitalization zone. The City of Danbury submits amendments to both zoning and subdivision regulations, which will reduce by 50% permit fees for proposed development for proposed development within the downtown revitalization zone, DRZ. This may involve combined two views with separate acts by the zoning planning commission as follows. One, planning commission, planning commission has requested to enact amendments to chapter 2, sections B7 of subdivision regulations that provide a positive referral to zoning commission for proposed amendments to section 10b2 of the zoning regulations. Two, the zoning commission, the zoning commission has requested to enact amendments to sections 10b2 of the zoning regulations. Subdivision fees relate to subdivisions, three... Three splits? And lot line revisions while zoning fees relate to zoning permits. Special exceptions, special permits, site plans, and waivers creating floodplain permits. Note that these fee reductions do not apply to required state federal fees. Background, in the December 2010, the Major Street Renaissance Task Force issued its final report to trouble downtown Danbury issues and recommendations 2010. Among other things, the report through the public consent package for the DRZ designed to send a clear message from the city to potential development of downtown Danbury's most hospitable environment and city to do business. The consent package included a variety of zoning amendments approved, expansion of the deferral assessment increases program, a reduction in connection permit application fees for municipal sewer and water service, a program to give top priority permit applications received, and reductions of permit fees for projects located within the DRZ. It is the final action which we're going to be today. Please note that both amendments include a minor error, the proposed downtown redevelopment zone should be amended on the floor to the downtown revitalization. That, can anybody here wish to speak in favor of the petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that our report pretty much stumps it out. I want to emphasize a couple of things. First of all, it only applies to downtown revitalization zone, not to the rest of the city. Secondly, it does not apply to state federal fees. State has fees that they tack on to permanent applications. What they do with that money, I do not know. What they do earn it, I do not know, but nevertheless, there is. And we think this is very important, it's part of the package. And I'm pointing out in our report to make downtown as hospitable place as possible to do business. There are a number of other actions, which will help the state place, but they are beyond purview of the zoning commission. They follow under the city council because they are amendments to the good ordinances. And hopefully, they'll be coming along in due course.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what's the timeframe on that appeal?
I don't know. I sent... I sent out to corporation council months ago, a draft for the expansion of the referral assessment programs. They are supposed to be coming up with recommended amendments affecting connection fees for municipal sewer and water service. And as far as giving top priority to permanent applications, we see what this is, this is what I call the top of the pile program. We don't get many applications for downtown, but if we will, rather than put them at the bottom of the pile and they were insubstantial, we will put them on top and do what then, expeditiously. And all that takes is action button to correct the departments.
Do we have additional questions? Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody against this petition? Anybody opposition to this petition? Anybody opposition to this petition? I don't believe we staff comments, it's just a staff representation. So with that.
Mr. Robyn. Yeah, I heard your answer to my question, but still, it can be like a ballpark as to when you're going to get the count called. You're going to get through this because there's an election coming up and there'll be a whole new group of people coming on again too. I don't want that to be led further because a whole bunch of people are going to hear it for the first time.
Are they going to hear it for the first time?
Really?
I'm afraid so.
Wow.
I'm afraid so. But that's out of my hands.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robyn.
That, any questions? And that, make a motion. Commissioner Haddad.
Surely to make a motion to move this public hearing.
A motion made by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Kovacs, regarding, like, I am going to seek Commissioner Palma or Commissioner Rents, and will seek Commissioner Vannity. That, discussion at closing public hearing, all the favors, any votes in the aye? No ayes opposed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move the petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis Elbert, planning director, to amend section 10b2 of the zoning regulations, in parentheses, fees for downtown revitalization zones, a number 2 in our old business, for possible, discussion possible action.
Motion by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Kovacs, discussion. All the favors, any votes in the aye? No ayes opposed? Time is over, this is 7:50. So we move on to the next public hearing. This is the petition of Madeline Ridge LLC, Two Scuffo Road, lot number F14124, for change of zone from RA40 to RMF4. Again, Commissioner Kovacs, legal notice. Notice hereby given.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to stay myself on this side, please.
Sure, so the director, Commissioner Jowdy, is going to recuse himself in his petition.
Notice hereby given that the zoning commission of the City of Danbury will, public hearings commence at 7:30pm on October 11th, 2011, in the council chambers and the third floor city hall, 55 Giral Avenue, consider the following matter. Petition of Madeline Ridge LLC, Two Scuffo Road, number F14124, for change of zone from RA40 to RMF4. Parties and interests and citizens should have an opportunity to be heard at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Haddad, do you have a plea petition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. City of Danbury Planning Commission, from the City of Danbury Planning Commission, October 11th, 2011, to Robert C. Malillo, Chairman Danbury's Zoning Commission, from Arnold P. Finelli, Junior Chairman Danbury Planning Commission, regarding 83A referral petition of Madeline Ridge LLC, Two Scuffo Road, F14124, for change of zone from RA40 to RMF4. The regular meeting held on October 5th, 2011, the City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a negative recommendation for the following reason. The proposed multifamily zone will approach into the RA40 zone because there is a rule of law to maintain them. The motion made by Mr. Yuris, seconded by Ms. Post, that's her, and passed unanimously.
I have from the City of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department, dated October 4th, 2011, to City of Danbury Planning Commission, City of Danbury Zoning Commission, from Dennis Elbert, referencing Two Scuffo Road, and that number F14124, petition to rezone from RA40 to RMF4. We have received a petition to rezone this parcel of land from RA40 to RMF4. The lot consists of 0.934 acres. Rezoning to RMF4 will conceivably allow a maximum of 10 dwelling units in this lot unless the planning commission grants a special exception for the housing incentive option. In that case, there could be as many as 16 units, although the actual number will depend on site development factors. The petitioner, Judge Bruno of Madeline Ridge LLC, gave the following reasons as to why the petition should be granted. Property adjacent to RMF's zone and south and west boundaries. Existing driveway to other multifamily projects is located on and over the southerly and westerly boundaries. Adjacent to RMF property will soon be rezoned after plan conservation development is approved. Plan conservation development. Plan conservation and development, PCD, in this parcel should be used for single-family development. However, the plan indicated the same use of lots in the immediate west, and that has since been rezoned to RMF4. Comment, 2005, the zoning commission received a petition to rezone two lots, including this lot and an immediate adjacent lot from north of RA40 to RMF4. That petition was rejected by the commission because, one, the rezoning did not comply with the ECD. Two, steep slopes are present on much of the property. Three, there will be no transition zone to a building of RA40 land. This petition, because it does not include the northern lot, contains fewer concerns. While petition still does not comply with the ECD, previous local rezonings to RMF4, though not compliant with the plan, undermine this argument that was established by the day of 2005. This application is not compliant with plan of conservation and development, but does order other RMF4 lands to the west for a service of zone change, which is by the zoning commission, after the plan was adopted by the planning commission. As a result, the commission will once again have to reconsider whether or not it wishes to continue to allow multifamily development to the state along Scuffo Road or Westville Avenue extension. Because the northern lot will remain zone RA40, there will be, at least for now, a buffer for others of homes located along Westville Avenue. This lot contains a house. Steep slopes extend along the western and northern portions of the lot, but the southern portion appears to have some space, which is buildable without excessive grade. We cannot determine conclusively if what lands will present on the site, although it does indicate that they are. Property is immediately accessible to Westville Avenue extension, and Collector Road. 10 multifamily units can generate approximately 6 trips per day on Scuffo Road. Site is accessible to municipal sewer and water service, maps of the area will be newly created available at the meeting. So anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Attorney Francis Jay Collins, offices at 148 Giral Avenue. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Madeline Ridge LLC, requesting zone change for the property of Two Scuffo Road, RA40 to RMF4. Property in question is a vacant lot, slightly less than 1 acre. And in the note on the map that was submitted with the application, that the zone change request showed 1.06 acres, but that includes the area of the, to the middle of Scuffo Road, and that is the given ground for zone. I've got a number of things that I'd like to know. And I have copies of both of these maps for the commission. The first is a supplemental map. A smaller copy of it for the commission. It basically shows the area to the south and west of this property in the RMF4 zone. And I believe there are nine copies here. So we remember and then we deliver. This is a map. That's the back, that will reduce the copy of the map that I presented.
It would have fallen hard copy, so that I would have.
The second map is really an overlay map of the subject property chosen. Known as lot number 2, 0.94 acres. Showed the area in black, proposed zone change. This is the adjacent residential property to the north. And this is a proposed landscape buffer that would be, if the zone change was approved, would be required by the regulations as a buffer to the residential project. But at that time, it would be, and I have nine copies here. Next, I have a series of eight photographs that I explained to the commission later. I had marked this, so you can see when you can pass them on. The first is a photograph of the applicant's property, which is right over here on the right, with the Samuel's Court multifamily down at the back, and the access way to Samuel's Court, to, I'm sorry, Samuel's Court, and their driveway, shown here. It was a slight encroachment of this driveway on my client's property, and according to the landlord, they were granted an easement to it. I think it must have been mistaken, they put in the driveway and then they got an easement over. The second one is a view from the applicant's property, which is right here. The driveway to the Samuel's Court property is back here. And this is the Hembrook Crossing condominiums. This is the first building that was directly observable. There's another building in back and another building further down, up in the Hembrook condominiums. This is a picture of the Samuel's Court building. It shows an access way, driveway, and this is my client's property on the left. Next is the picture of the Hembrook Crossing property. And you can notice that on one of the small maps that I gave you earlier, which are those properties you all know. The next one is a photograph of the Racing Brook condominium. And that is followed by the Vita's buildings, which I believe is two or three properties, which are not shown on that map, but if I can. That was not listed here, but it's right here. It consists of two, two-story building. It's in the background there.
Just tell us. Tell us.
Oh, we did?
The small one is on there. Great. No, I was going to ask, is there any appointments to Racing Brook condominium or?
No, okay, I got it. It's just to the right of Hembrook. Then you have the Renaissance City of Danbury, which is shown there. And the final one is the Westville Condoms. And if you can tell from the maps that we've seen of it. If you can tell from the map showing another RMF4 multifamily. This property was ordered, which are the all sides, the condominiums are by RMF's own property. A little bit of background, Dean. This property was put out on the Stafford report, and the adjoining property, the middle of the multifamily outside, come out. Was subject to zone change application in March 2005. That was denied because it didn't provide a buffer for the residential area to the north. And steep slopes along the rear third of the property through the center. Those are the reasons. Property was subsequently fully closed by the mortgage charges. And my clients purchased just a vacant lot. We believe the change in the area requested providing basis for approval of the zone change for the following reasons. One, the site is suitable for multifamily development. The property on the east side of the zone, RA40, is compatible with that zone and the surrounding properties. Successful to see a northern sewer and some sort of. Two, the parcel immediately to the north with the house on it is not included in the zone change. My client would be required to put in that 25-foot buffer required by the regulations and shown on the map. The Samuel's Court property was developed. Sidewalk leading to that development is installed on a small portion of my client's property with no buffer whatsoever, or a transism zone between that property, zone RMF4, and the R40 property. My client's property here from the zone, would not provide that, shown on the map. Three, the change would not be in conjunction with the plan of conservation development. There is several new zones in the RMF4, the property to the western and southern. As the Stafford report mentioned, the previous zone, the RMF4, since the plan was abated, undermines the indication that this parcel should be used for single-family development. Fourth, the planning commission, I think. Now, I'm sure somebody remembers, know the problem that has been with the planning commission. You can't speak or provide any evidence to that commission. They just took the Stafford report and they stuck along with the knowledge of the court. They decided, so they didn't have an opportunity to see all this visual, like they're showing us tonight. Plus, the only reason they give for a negative recommendation is if there's no buffer on some of these sites. There is no buffer right now between my client's lot and RMF4. But the regulations do require a 25-foot buffer, and my clients will provide that, because they have to do that for all the questions. I'm going to just touch on a couple items mentioned in the Stafford report. Sort of, to ensure the, what was on the property. My client, part of purchasing, check that out, and there are no options on the property. The other one regards to maximum of units. It's a table, depending on the development of the property. Not up to 16 of the housing, with incentive option. Actually, I think it's 13 of the housing incentive option in the first year. We included the area of Scuffo Road, but the zone change can't include the incentive.
Several, after several, the work can't be used as a test.
That's right. In conclusion, we believe the change is consistent with the zoning scheme of this area, as shown by your past decisions in the zone of nearby properties. It conforms with the character of neighborhood. It's a logical and best use for this parcel, simply because it would be very difficult to develop a market for this property. So I'm thinking, um, we're requested here with a consideration of it. Mr. Bruno, from the applicant LLC, is here.
Any questions? Do we have any questions for Mr. Robbins? Commissioner Haddad?
Trying to find the best map to ask you a question, I'm going to admit you this. The 2005 application, was it for this, this piece right here?
Yes.
Okay, so it was actually like a couple acres then?
Yes, it was 1.87 acres.
All right, so it was top piece here.
It was also included in the last plan list.
So the one that says, uh, general real estate holdings.
Yes.
And subject parcel, was one parcel.
One parcel, one submission, but with that in 2005.
And they were the applicant at the time, or is it general real estate holdings?
General real estate holdings was, they eventually got more close, I believe. For the sole.
Any suggestions?
I have a question, I have a question that I'm trying to grapple with. The reason for the planning commission was that it would encroach, it would be no buffer, would encroach on the RMF, probably our 40 zone, as the reason for the negative recommendation. But in reality, it's three quarters by the RMF4 zone. It's, I mean, it's right in the middle of the RMF4 zone. So I was just wondering, is there any reason, or do you actually don't know? Do you have no?
I couldn't tell you, we don't get the opportunity to, I mean, that means, I don't know what they thought of it. Obviously, the need is planned development.
Obviously, they need this kind of development, which is normal. And I'm not sure they were aware that there would have to be a buffer required by the regulations in the adjacent zone. That's the only explanation I have, just in case.
Additional questions?
The landscape buffer, it says, uh, is there a height on that? I can't remember if there's a height on that landscape buffer, because that, it slopes down according to this slope slopes.
This will be, as you can see on there.
The trees are supposed to be level or six feet high.
Yeah, if the trees are six feet high, but it slopes way down, I mean, really, the concern, you know, this is lots of residential property, right?
You won't be able to see it. Because it slopes down, you probably.
Okay.
And the only place.
I'm just not familiar with the property.
The only place this can be developed is on the southern portion of property.
Any additional questions? Anybody else here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody against this petition? Anybody opposition to this petition? Anybody opposition to this petition? Mr. Elfrid, a bit of a staff comments?
The one thing I want to bring your attention is that, should you grant the reason, you may, you may in the future have an application or a planning commission, or an incentive option, which means it will be on more than. So keep that in mind. If that is granted and if it's turned down, that might be the specific agreement, who knows?
And now?
Keep that in mind.
Would you be just correct?
Sixteen.
Ten to sixteen.
Sixteen by my man. Perfect by me.
If that's the case, we have some.
He's got the new man. You're on the new man. You're under the man.
I'm just pushing the regulation.
So there'll be an additional, maybe a distinction.
Why don't we know, why don't we know what really is this? Is it a map?
It is a map.
So you're taking, I mean, there's two different sources.
I'm saying it's probably for sixteen.
And that reason is what?
Because of my calculator.
You're calculating it differently.
Where you go, an RMF four, when you go on a housing consent option, you do, so four thousand square feet, and there's 2500.
What's your hat?
I agree with what you're saying. However, if this commission saw that the planning commission voted and made a negative recommendation, then this petition approves it tonight, and it goes back to them. They denied it, didn't want any, they're probably not going to approve it to the consensus.
No, we would, with them, it's, just keep that in mind. I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to happen, it's just.
You're reminding us of the passage, Jim, where it's the late agreements of.
Exactly.
President will be with us.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from Joel?
The only thing, I wasn't at the planning commission either. They're talking about property. Yeah, it wasn't. Now, the only thing I could think.
Joel said, Mr. Elfrid said, right from the start, I was out there, I looked at the property even, I don't think that lot's gonna be a buffer. There's not gonna be any buffer. And he made the motion, and that was his reason.
Okay, I think what? What he may have meant was transition. And there's a difference between transitions and others. Transition would be a step down. But the applicant owns the building, he's building property, and has got a house on it, and it's probably a good place to go.
That's not, that's not the case, right? It's too, he got sold, right? Now it's.
All right, somebody.
It's the bank, so.
I'm in the bank. I don't like the bank, and that's the place to go.
Should there be any specification in the buffer, like, you know, heights and breadth?
And it's all on the regulations. Yes, you would not, that's not particularly.
Jerry Collins, you have any additional comments?
Not, not really, just the regulation in the housing consent Act says, four thousand square feet without the housing consent. It's three thousand, one year, three thousand with the housing consent. That's where I get the 3,000, less than the acre. Ten units of 4,000.
Any additional questions? With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Would you agree, would you agree, Mr. Elfrid?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I move that with close call. That was in favor.
We did.
I did the one.
Yeah, we did.
I did the, the three, and nobody jumped out, and so we're good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Decaprio to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Palma. Discussion on closing the public hearing?
Yes, we have to discuss this.
Commissioner's thirteen.
It's thirteen years, that is. Is it okay to squeeze that in for the Washington Street, ten and thirteen?
Well, it is in.
That and thirteen, okay.
Yes, it is in during the public hearing, because the public hearing is still open until it closes.
I have nothing else to say.
Thirteen possible. With that, further discussion on closing the public hearing. With that, all in favor, seeking my thing, I, I opposed. Public hearing is closed. Next item of business, this is, I believe, this is a property talk. This is petition of Rio Tuscan Grill, Seven Baptist Avenue to E, number F17015, for special permit for restaurant liquor license. Commissioner Kovacs, if you will read the remarks. Notice is hereby given to zoning commission of city of Danbury, a public hearing is commenced at 7:00 PM on October 11th, 2011, in the council chambers on the third floor, City Boulevard, five Deer Hill Avenue. Consider the following matter, petition of Rio Tuscan Grill, Seven Baptist Avenue to E, number F17015, for special permit for restaurant liquor license. Parties and interested citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. With that, is there anybody here wishing to speak? Does the record reflect that Commissioner Giotti has rejoined us? And the record should also reflect that Commissioner Tierney has joined us and is here presently, this is the notice for this public hearing. With that, is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this action? You're on the table.
David? My name is Jonathan Eddie. I'm the general manager for the new Danbury building. It will be opening, the opening date is November 22nd. We would like to, for, for the community, always, add you a minute to be able to, sort of, keep it in mind. Sure, I guess, hence, as in experience, maybe we could, just, for the community. Probably some of the menus that we have, we have, um, the power. General menu, I was there, one menu, we have daily menu. Also, probably, with me, we have all trained out, we did together, all of our staff, and just on the house, of course, through that training, whether it is now, opening, or five days from now, five hundred people, everybody just sees.
Okay, so, do you want to do any questions? Mr. Shannon?
Yes, it's, this is National Chain?
Yes, it is.
Our profit office is based out of Columbus, Ohio. We have existed concept of Bravo Restaurant, about 45 of those, and we report the product of the restaurant. Just a little, just one item.
So your alcohol training is basically not from a small store in Danbury, it's a regional thing?
It's a, yes, it's a national professional concept.
And also, you say you look for a patio, uh?
Yes, we do have two terraces. One is successful.
It's all approved. The cyclone has been approved for all of the space they're asking for. It's just a common, in the sense that they have to file a separate application for the patio, but if you, this party that you can improve it.
It's a patio flush with the round parking lot, it's above, uh?
It is a base curb step above. It's a curb step above, so even with the sidewalks a little around.
And what you have from, as a wall from your patio into a?
There's a 42-inch-high iron fence with two gates for egress. There are cement painters spaced throughout that.
But can anybody be sitting down with alcohol on a patio and then jump over a wall? I guess that may be a high danger, yes.
No, but most, there is a fence there.
Oh, okay, yeah. So it's, and there's concerned people, so you know, drinking, and just taking their beer and going to the car, it's not.
Like, no.
Oh, okay.
Additional questions? Mr. Giotti?
It sounds like that you probably talked a little bit, and, 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 with their lead on the different, uh, things they needed to do, that answer, does that make sense?
Yes, and I've also talked to the general contractor, who explains a lot of these things to us as well. The height of fences, where they need to be, how many needs of egress for?
Have you had no contact with the looking for egress through the patio?
I have not.
Yes, the attorney, I spoke to the, I can't, this would be attorney, and he's general manager, and he got told, come to that.
Yes.
Sounds good, sounds real good.
I'm gonna ask one question now, I think, in our majority. Does the cheesecake pantry have, they serving them around their patio as well?
Yeah, that was kind of it.
So, yeah, that's why I figured now would be a decent, I'd ask that question, because there's already, so that also is on the patio.
Yes.
With that, any additional questions?
Mr. Elfrid sent to remind you to know the drill. I have two, I have two, and we do have floor plan, and.
Looks like they have ample seating.
How many seats are on the patio?
Questions?
Eighty tables. How many? Eighty. Four. Mostly four tops, yes. We do have a row of tables, seven, we're having, six feet, so there's about six.
It looks like you're gonna have a winged bar.
Yes.
The answer is right, man. It's closer to 45 tables.
So if it is 40, then we're done, or we're, 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 we're already having a little people.
Winged bars can be about two, five.
So if you're gonna have four, eighty tables, and you stable has four, that's fifteen hundred twenty.
It was also important, there's also tape, never before I've done, there's also tables in the bar, and there's 22 bar stools.
So maximum seating would be up to 20, I think, nine. I think there are those.
They have set them. So when I say they have set them, too, that means they satisfied all those requirements, and there is active parking for the number of seats they're providing, because that's how we base the parking calculation for restaurants. It's based on the number of seats plus a certain number of employees we shift.
Plus, I would also remind you that this would be more our main building, Danbury Mall, so there is active parking at the ceiling, and it's a number of users. Any further questions?
There's no, there's no access to any of the buildings, like cheesecake bakery, or filings or anything, this is all just on the inside?
No, there is no wall.
You can't get, yeah, you can't get from, from your establishment, other than outside. It's only outside.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak, or do you have any additional?
Just in case. We have extra answers.
Okay. So we're making it easy for you, huh? Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody against this petition? Anybody opposition to the petition? Anybody opposition to the petition? Mr. Elfrid would like to remind us about the requirements in the zoning regulations, which we're all familiar with, regarding conflicting religious organizations, charitable organizations, schools, and all the lights. With that, I don't have any other comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion closed, closing, seconded by Commissioner Giotti. Discussion on closing the public hearing, all in favor, it goes, I, I opposed. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner had.
I'd like to make the motion, move petition, uh, petition of Rio Tuscan Grill, Seven Baptist Avenue to E, parentheses, F17015, for liquor license, for number three of Old Business, for discussion.
Motion moved to discussion, item number three, seconded by Commissioner Kovacs. Discussion, all in favor, take an eye. I, any opposed? Can you give us three minutes? We will instantly take action. Thank you. With that, I will move to item number one, under Old Business. This is the petition of Scott Venecasa and David Venecasa to the Men's Centers, two B, five B, two B, subsection 12, five B, five D, eight C, for the zoning regulations add indoor shooting range as a special exception use, the A80 zone. So the record is likely, Commissioner Giotti, and Commissioner Tierney, and Commissioner Kovacs have listened to all of the tapes that were necessary for this to be eligible for this meeting. So present, um, at the 9/13 meeting, I was, Commissioner Decaprio, Commissioner Haddad, Commissioner Giotti, myself, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Tierney, Commissioner Palma, Commissioner Vanudie. The planning commission recommendation was positive, so we only need some majority for this, and if I, I follow correctly, it means that everybody present is eligible to go on this petition. So with that, um, does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, please. I have a motion, it's a positive, it includes number seven, the one space per shooting booth, plus one space per employee.
Didn't ask if the planning commission would. The powers that we have presented.
Yeah, he said to leave them and help him back. Yeah.
Well, it's easier.
One parking space per, per, one parking space per employee, plus, plus one per approved or whatever the range terminology is.
Actually, off.
Commissioner, I'm ready, the recognition of Commissioner Decaprio, the motion, and I'd like to.
You can coach me, absolutely.
Yes. Commissioner Decaprio?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the application, uh, subject to, uh, the planning, uh, planning commission recommendation, one space per shooting booth, plus one space per employee, and making this a special exception use, which is what it is, as well as the addition of design standards and criteria will provide the planning commission the necessary discretion to limit the location of these seats to the appropriate areas in the city.
Seconded by Commissioner Palma. Discussion on approving this petition. We adapt, Mr. Palma.
Plus one space. Plus one space per employee. At the largest shift.
Add, to the, to the larger shift.
Yes. Okay, discussion. And yes, vote will approve this petition, and no vote for denying the petition. Mr. Decaprio?
Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Vanudie?
Yes.
Mr. Haddad?
I'll pass my vote to the youngest.
Uh, Mr. Giotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
I too will vote yes. Commissioner Haddad, do you wish to?
Although, although not.
If it passes, second to one. Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, this is item number two, under Old Business. This is the petition of the city of Danbury, unless Dennis wants us to be there.
He wants us to just, yeah.
The petition of the city of Danbury, but NSI Elephant Planning Director, due to Men's Centers, 10 B2 of the zoning regulations, speeds for downtown revitalization zone. Commissioner Decaprio?
I make a motion to approve the petition. Need to get the brief? I should go to the...
A brief for the vote?
The downtown revitalization area.
Seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Oh, we need to amend that to...
Oh, also, there is a word that's in there, it has to be revitalization and not...
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, right.
So motion to approve, with my...
Do you second it?
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Discussion.
I think it's a great idea, I think it was a good job.
Once again, a yes vote will approve petition, a no vote denied. Okay, Commissioner DiCaprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vannuti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Yes.
Commissioner Gianni?
Yes.
Commissioner Gianni?
Yes.
I two vote no, yes. Uh, actually, Commissioner Tierney was...
Right.
Not present for nuclear public hearing, so it's actually seven zero seven. Yeah, I did catch that. Okay, uh, third item is the petition of Rio Tuscan Grill, Seven Baptist Avenue to E, number F-17015, for special permit for restaurant liquor license. Motion? Commissioner Palmer is making a recommend the motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Palmer, seconded by Commissioner Gianni. Discussion, review of the motion. Once again, a yes vote approves, a no vote denies. Commissioner Palmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gianni?
Yes.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vannuti?
Yes.
Commissioner Gianni?
Yes.
Commissioner DiCaprio?
Yes.
I two vote yes. Eighteen zero. And now voting. There are no items under new business, there are no items under correspondence, uh, just so that everyone knows, I think what we're gonna do is regarding the zoning, uh, violations, we're gonna submit those on a monthly basis.
Yeah, the end of the month.
A question on, uh, Madeline Bridge, uh, you want to wait till we get a full slate of all of the...
Mr. Rens is going to come in and listen, he called to then explain the death of the family, so he set off the next week, this week's tape.
The tapes, yeah, we're gonna need more too, right? We need, we have seven.
We have seven, we will need to...
Maybe they have nine, because there's a...
Negative, yeah. So we can hopefully give maybe commissioners, Mr. Who, Mr. May, or Mr. Who, or Mr. Farah, they're gonna make it in as well. But yeah, I was, I knew Fisher Rents had made her arrangements to work, said he would come in, and then we'll retalk to him. Okay. Tierney, you have like coming ten, you have probably like ten minutes you need to listen to. So just when we need others, I can do the beginning.
Yeah, we're gonna have to be two weeks, two weeks, second to one.
So our next meeting should be in two weeks, we can hopefully, um, if everybody is here this evening, and we look, and we look back, we can go on this petition, we'll also move the terms of items to the planning commission.
We might have a, we might have a grocery reviewer to, I have one sitting at my desk. She was in a hurry, so I was gonna, she didn't need to meet, I was gonna pull it off.
And we have another liquor license.
Do we have enough right now for, we don't see...
Grocery reviewer, I don't know, something I want to do. But come, I, I get at least two of the places to get, the package store and just, so yeah, I have two packages for the grocery reviewer, playing with the processors, can we still go to the...
Is there anything else under other matters?
Yeah, if you're interested, you might want to walk this up, on grocery reviewer permits, taking it out of your hands, right, it's a sensible regulation, you're just not even able to, if we're permitted to do that, I would give you instructions.
Can we get corporation counsel opinion on that?
I, I would definitely have to. There is currently, yeah, according to the...
According to everyone, or other people too.
So...
Does what?
The other towns require this.
It doesn't go to zone.
Okay.
Just, uh, just talking about grocery reviewer, not talking about package store, not talking about restaurants.
Is there been any in recent history that we've had in the diet for grocery?
Well, we really can't deny it.
Yeah, so I mean, no one can remember when...
Yeah.
We can't even have a number...
In the twenty-four years I've been here, we've denied about two.
The only thing that I have, it's a comment, since I've come on, there's distance between.
And I don't know if we ever denied a grocery reviewer. Yeah, no, we did.
Yeah, we, we denied one or two, right?
Right, yeah, I think we denied two.
While, and I think it was...
Is that a possibility, something we might consider before, before these arguments, making a regulation of distance between?
I think so.
Well, I'd look into it.
I hope it's the same, we actually...
Well, I can do it, well, which has to be done.
Didn't we talk about this, entering the summer, we had a meeting, we couldn't do it?
Well, that's something I'll have to...
With that, I'll...
I understand why, go ahead.
Right.
Yes, I don't have any objection. With that, I would like to hear a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
By Commissioner DiCaprio, seconded by Commissioner Kovacs, all those in the area adjourned, see if they're promising aye. Aye, o's, if they want to stay, adjourn.
Start of our Columbus Day weekend festivities, um, and, uh, we, we have a couple of, just general announcements that you just want to make you aware of. Um, tonight is the annual Columbus Day Dinner Dance at the Vespucci, at Tonino, what time does that start?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, uh, if you don't have a ticket, our ticket's still available, I'm sure we can figure that out for you, and, uh, we want to encourage you to attend this evening. I know that, uh, um, there'll be a nice turnout of people there, it's always a lot of fun, and of course, the great cooking by Rocco, uh, and his team in the kitchen, I think you'll be impressed. Um, tomorrow is the, uh, it's the Newtown Labor Day Parade, that's been changed to the Newtown Columbus Day Parade, because, uh, Labor Day, we had the hurricane, so, um, that was typically an annual event on September, supposed to happen September, I think, third, but, uh, it's happening tomorrow, so kinda continues the, the celebration, uh, if you will, if you're interested in going up to Newtown. We're joined by a number of elected officials today, I want to thank them for taking time out of their morning to, to stop by and help us raise the flag, uh, in Italy over our great city hall, and our, our judge of probate, Diane Yaman, is here, uh, Lori Kevak, our town clerk, Ben Shinisi, city councilman, is with us, Paul Rotello, city councilman, uh, Andrew Roryback came all the way down to join us this morning, our state senator is with us today, we appreciate you being here, Andrew, thank you for taking time out of your day. Our council president, Joe Cabo, is here as well, and Bruno Trobiano, our president of the, uh, uh, Vespucci Lodge Italian American Club is in Italy, I guess that's where you're supposed to be at, Columbus Day weekend, so, um, uh, we have Mr. Sarah here, he's gonna help us a little bit, a little bit later, I'm gonna say a few words, so, uh, with that, I'm gonna call Maria Lestaco up here, she's gonna lead us in the, uh, the American National Anthem, and then, um, the Italian National Anthem, and then after, we'll raise the flags, Jimmy, or you wanna do them at the same time? Let's do them at the same time, okay. So Mr. Sarah, why don't you come on over and get positioned for the American flag, uh, Tonino, why don't you raise that for us, would you be willing to do that? All right? And as, uh, Maria sings each one, we'll raise each flag. Jimmy, we do, uh, US first, right? Okay, we'll do the US first, you ready?
I guess we might come up here a little bit, even though it's not right there.
Yeah.
Don't be the crowd.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, stars that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[1543.80][1544.20](APPLAUSE)
Let's give Maria another round of applause, wasn't she great? She's getting better every year. She hates my compliment, but I will, but she's terrific, and we appreciate her participation this morning. Uh, right now, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sarah to come forward and speak, uh, to say a few words on behalf of the club.
Buongiorno. Good morning, it is a good morning, isn't it? Uh, I don't know, it's fortunate or unfortunate, our president should be here, but he's, uh, business and vacation in Italy, so anyway, uh, I don't have to introduce anybody, the honor of mayor over here to this everybody, so, uh, the only thing I want to say, this is the seven, eighty-seventh birthday of us, Teresa Plaguey, here in Danbury, so we have a longer tradition of, of Italian in this town. So anyway, no further notice, so I would like to invite you all over to the club, we have some coffee, some donuts, and some goodies, and chicha for Eponoro, whatever, and I thank you, Poten, and I hope we will see you later, or even tonight, have a good day.
Good job, hope you don't run for mayor anytime soon, go easy. At the church, okay, so we're, I mean, at the, uh, at the club, so we'll move along, we are, and also, we'll have the mass, uh, at the club as well, Tonino mentioned, so, uh, at this time, I'm gonna, uh, conclude the ceremony just by reminding you that it is a hundred and fiftieth, uh, uh, anniversary of the reunification of Italy, so it's a very, uh, important time in terms of recognizing our roots, and I know that Phyllis, uh, uh, would want me to say, as somebody who's a hundred and fifty percent Italian, if that's possible, um, except I do all the cooking in the house, what's up that? But anyways, um, I know that she would also want me to, to remind everybody, as, as Mr. Sarah already mentioned, about the eighty-seventh anniversary of the club, so, uh, this is a really special time, uh, to be an Italian American in the city of Danbury, I think today, in the next few days, we're all Italians, and so we're gonna enjoy and celebrate our wonderful rich ethnic heritage, God bless you, and God bless America, thank you for coming, and onto the mass.